I've got to need some form right now. So, for my end, we're having a little sound just to think of them. Thank you.
Mr. Jeter, would you introduce? I think we have the pleasure of some of your students to leave some place of allegiance.
Yes, I'm going to introduce our middle school social studies teacher Valerie Bates. She's also student government sponsor and I'm going to have her introduce our kids.
Tonight, we have Julia Egger, Egler. You put that in my brain. Uh, Sala Roman, Emma Weller. These are three of our seventh grade SGA members. And a really cool chick, Kedram McCall, is going to join them and say the prayers.
We've got to take this part off girls.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ladies. Thank you, Ms. Bates.
Moving in, I think all the board members had a chance to review our, uh, the minutes or our written schedule beginning back in February. I always ask after review, was there any changes, corrections? Have a motion to be accepted. Do I hear a second? I want to say all in favor, say my thing. Aye. You oppose. So moved. As moving, let me recognize, we're, I don't know if this is good or bad tonight. We're actually going to, who of our commissioners are here? Uh, Mr. Tate, who now is our chairman. Is that right here?
Right here.
Vice chair. That's right, Kevin, vice chair. And of course, no stranger, Mr. Chiles. So gentlemen, thank you for coming. Raise your hand anytime if you're something, we'll kind of go from there, okay?
I ain't afraid to say it.
Next is adoption of our agenda. And they listen as I go through these in front of their mat as I know we need to act make two changes. Under our overnight out of district trip request, uh, Matt Bradley behalf of the, uh, J.B. Facebook. Now, since that date is actually March the 29th, is that right? And then under our substitutes, under personnel, we're adding a name, which is as a, of James Guffey, who will be hopefully approved as a substitute bus driver. Anything else on your behalf? So, those are two changes. Any other board member have any changes? And also we're going to add, I'm sorry, John gave me a high sign. We're adding under buildings and grounds. Uh, if we talk about the, how does it say, Mr. Kenning is going to give us an update on the Coliseum School. He had some history on those. So we'll add John to their buildings and grounds. Anything else? Not very much to do with our agenda. Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say my thing. Aye. Aye. You oppose. So moved. Good. Spotlight on people and programs. Do you have anything there? Okay. Uh, in public comment, we did have our signup sheet. I don't know if anyone's signed up. That doesn't mean we still want to open the floors. Anyone here that would like to address the board on whatever you might have in your mind or anything at this time? Good deal. Moving on. Because now we're talking about ways to try to, um, expedite this. All the board members had a chance, uh, under information items to see the overnight trip request. And also under fundraising, rather than, uh, going through each one and having like, Mr. What do you remember? We all receive information about those trips. So are there any questions on the information about any of the trips that are listed by the board members? And then we'll just move on there and just include that in our, um... So, at this time then I'll entertain a motion that we approve. Section three of our, um, agenda for our overnight trip request and also fundraising. Do I hear that motion? Have a motion, do I hear a second? All in favor, say my thing. Aye. You oppose. So moved. Personnel. Again, if you all had a chance to look at that. Mr. Bell, is there anything you need to add? Does anyone have any questions? Do the board members have any questions on Mr. Bell? Not very much, we approve all the items listed in personnel. A motion to approve all the items, not according to personnel, do I hear a second? Motion, second, all in favor, say my thing. Aye. Aye. You oppose. So moved. Just slow me down. One of the carefully careful, what can I say? So, wave a flag. Franklin Health and Fitness Center contracts. Dr. Baldwin? A motion to accept Franklin Health and Fitness Center. I've got that presented. Go here a second. All in favor, say my thing. Aye. You oppose. So moved. I saw the, where here, summer adventure camp.
I'm just here to get our approval for our training dates and, um, the dates for camp and location and fees. Um, we want to do our training week June 15th for the butt tape. And summer camp would run with kids, um, June 22nd through August the 6th. We have two sessions that, um, that can choose if they don't want the whole summer, they can choose session A, which is June 22nd through July 10th, or session B, which is July 13th through August the 6th. Um, our location this year will be at, uh, Tijuji, there's some, uh, work that's going on at Mountain View. And, um, our prices are the same as last year. We didn't change prices or raise them.
Anyone have any questions? A motion to be approved. The schedules presented for summer adventure camp along with the teacher head. Go here a second. Second. All in favor, say my thing. Aye. You oppose. So moved. Policy manual discussion, counselor.
This is on the agenda, give me another opportunity to plug the notion of, um, updating our policy manual. Uh, consideration of getting on to the school board association, uh, model policy with something much closer to it. We will have at your next board meeting, uh, some numbers for you to look at. Various, uh, methods that we might need to go through in that school association. Has services that take this in policy manuals and compare it to their model policy manual. I mean, what you have or don't have, but they do, don't, and allow you to compare it. I would tell you that is basically a necessity that we overhaul the policy manual to some extent. You gotta do a practice of leaving it sort of stagnant. And we get room to actually extend a couple of years ago like that on the updates, uh, service from the school board association. But, uh, matter in and of itself is generally jive if there's any updates to policies you don't have. We have to sort of figure them out after the fact and, and make it fit as we go along. So better, much better practice, safer practice would be to do a full overhaul over several months. And something to be thinking about is whether one or two of you want to be on committee and maybe meet the staff. Me as needed, but I'm going to try to limit that as much as possible. And let it be generated by, by the district to get guidance from the school association. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about that. But just something we're going to bring you more information on next month and something that is definitely...
I think it's important, John, to figure out, because they have different options, correct? Yes, yes. See the different ones and what's going to be provided for those. That would be very helpful, so we'll look forward to seeing that next month.
Yes, sir. Um, so in that same vein of policy updates, I do have for you an updated policy seven oh five on non-renewal of non-career status teachers. That is a change in terminology because we used to have probationary teachers. But you're really not, it's a thing anymore. What I have brought you, over one there, and if you go, I'll just hold down the page today. This does what board, uh, it's essentially the board was to, to see in a policy, which is what Lake County Schools adopted. It does provide the same sorts of career-type protections as were under the, the career teacher law or the tenure law. Uh, after a fifth-year consecutive service, uh, for Lake County Schools, an employee would only be non-renewed at the end of a contract period for any of the reasons that dismissal could be taken as an action during the contract year. So it essentially functions like the, the, the tenure law did for teachers that had that much consecutive service. Otherwise, this updates to now June 1st being the, the new deadline for notice to teachers to be non-renewed. And otherwise dispels out the process they can take from there to request a hearing of the board. There's a section here that I need your input on, and you can stop right there. The school boards associations suggested practice for how to decide when the teacher requests a hearing, whether the board will grant, because it is not compulsory. If you all recall before the tenure law was appealed or, or stated that it is in the, in the... There certainly are no more fourth-year probationary teachers, which we had right before that change. And those fourth-year probationary teachers were entitled to have a hearing for the board if the intent was to non-renew them right before that tenure decision. That being appealed, there is no right to a hearing for a non-renewal decision. Obviously, you're adding one if you adopt this policy for teachers that have had five years of consecutive service. But otherwise, you will need a mechanism to decide whether or not the board is going to grant hearings if they're requested by teachers that are not, don't have the consecutive year of service. The school board association suggested in practice is to have the board chair and vice chair consult and decide whether or not a hearing will be granted. That's not mandatory. Uh, the note there is highlighted, says it's within discretion of the board how to go about deciding whether or not you're going to grant hearings in those circumstances. Also show that we, we added, and it is our standard advice, that you require the petition for hearings to be in writing and specify the grounds of appeal, including any violations of state or federal law. Because it just generally doesn't make sense that you should have to have a hearing every time the superintendent makes a decision to, you know, to recommend non-renewal if the hearing is just going to be, well, I disagree. I, I, it's up to you. And you can hear every one of those if you want to. You will have received in closed session and know what the superintendent, you have to by law. You're not allowed to just rubber stamp a non-renewal decision anyway. You have to know what the superintendent's basis of recognition is. So, if that is the only reason somebody has to, to want to have a hearing on a non-renewal decision, it's not necessarily going to incur. You will know what good evidence there is if they should be non-renewed. So I, I need your input, Tom, on how you as a board want to go about deciding. One, do you want to leave that, that recommended language in that requires either violation of state or federal law and stating in writing for you to have a non-renewal hearing? And who is going to decide exactly whether or not a hearing is granted? Can you be an act of the whole board?
Fred.
We spoke. He said, "Ask me about the due process." That, that we feel like as a board, that we wanted our teachers at Lake County to have due process, which it seemed that that's what, that's what we'd grant them. If we say, "We're going to go by that," they have to do. In most of my experience, I, you know, usually when somebody is not renewed, uh, a lot of different endeavors, they usually go off. So I don't think you'd have that many that would, every time the superintendent, as you mentioned, had a case for non-renewal, that you'd have somebody wanting to go through the due process. I just, I just like to see our teachers be able to have the due process.
I think that's what this is doing to large degree. Let me voice my concern, John, about chair and the vice chair making that determination. I'd like for the board to think that about that long and hard before we adopt that as our operating policy. I'm not adverse to it if that's what you all want, at the same time as... Come on, Fred, talking about, I think, I feel like it's just something that we as a board have decided that we'd like to have this included, even though we as a board are not able to make that decision. But it's too big for us, that's just my thoughts.
The other thing, because in a sense, it's a community that we're so in part of our community and people that live in our system, it's often hard to get board. It might be able to, not that anybody would make the decision on the project, just that you might be related to them or, I just think that it gives them a little bit more opportunity to feel like they're being heard. Not that, it wouldn't, not so clearly, I mean, that's, that's a common way.
Take away, take away.
It's also changing, you know, that's, I was getting targeted off, I'm, I'm, I'm... Possible people chair and vice, but I, I would be interested, Jeff, I think, um, to get the due process expressed.
And again, I think that's suggesting, keep in mind it's suggestive language from school board association that they try to fit Lake County Schools and Charlotte Nacelle Schools. Yeah, it probably makes a lot more sense in a huge district when it comes down to whether the board's going to cure it or not, not to have to go through a stack of non-renewals like this every year with the whole board there. So I, I don't think we have nearly enough here to not, you know, and even the fewer of those are going to be appealed like...
And that's the only ones that we would ever care about, are the ones that are being appealed.
Yes.
Nice word, we're known about that thought a lot.
Well, we're notified, but at the same time...
The non-renewal has to be an act of board anyway.
Exactly.
It's a trial and error, has to be taken. And you have, like you said, you have to consider these in order, but as far as whether or not they're going to get appealed, I think it can practically work for us that you all will just, you'll know if somebody's trying to appeal and what the base of it is, and just decide as a whole board whether or not to, yeah, to, to have that here. We'll be able to...
I think, well, I just think that puts a lot of pressure on us to, to, you know, to, to... Like we are in this law, I mean, you wouldn't be able to, after something, you know, to put that whole responsibility on just the table. But yeah, it's going to be, where our community has to have this.
I think so, also.
But we still have to be prepared for it, right?
So we're looking at, because this is the first reading, John, it's kind of the way I'm laying towards going. This is first time everybody's had a chance to look at it, so I'm thinking we'll take it and look it over and then revisit it at the next meeting.
Although we still have to decide how we're going to handle these contracts and figure, figure, run your contract, figure your contract, uh, for your... Yes. And I don't know, I'll have to do some research into what's being recommended as a method for doing that. Because I, as we talked about, I don't know how we go about, how the board, if it has a body, is supposed to go about deciding who gets it on to it for. That is something we...
Is that something we felt we could incorporate into this or no?
No, so there's another, there's policy seven oh three, and, and again, my hope is that these will get incorporated into a much more comprehensive policy review soon. Policy seven oh three is about who gets awarded. It's about contracts for, as you said, as correctly as you can. And I think that would be a good question.
We could just make that change on this one, John, and we'll, everybody can look at it just in a standard, in a hot spot, where the teacher's requested a hearing, then the board shall convert them ourselves and decide. I think it's, it's, if that change over, and put it on itself and make a decision what they're going to hear.
And I will be happy to bring it back to you as a, you know, not having had a first reading. May ask at that time to suspend, if the next, if April, you can suspend rules and let it pass. Because...
I think so, it's time to think about it, and I want to encourage anyone, after looking it over, if you have any suggestions, let me know or let Dr. Baldwin know, we can turn it, that's a little good. John, he raised, hopefully, the place, I guess, to you.
Right, yes, Dr. Baldwin. How did that tie in frame? Decision by June 15th, I, I guess that'd be fairly easy, but what about, um, the 10 days? And then, you know, a hearing would take place sometime in the future after that, probably be in July before that would take place. Would it, would that be early enough? I guess with this current school calendar, it would be, we were to get local control.
I think we can manage it, we can change that time frame. And I obviously will. Well, in part, you can, you can thank the expert craftsmanship, uh, you, um, for, for some of this. The, the old non-renewal statute says that, um, we had to give notice by May 15th, and they bumped that out to June 1st. But then they didn't bump out to June 15th, then wanted the board to make a decision on it. So it, it, it looks like it gives administration more time to decide whether or not they're going to recommend non-renewal. But it just crunched the time that the board had to act on. Effectively, it's still, and our advice to every just, if then, don't, I'm about to say you first, but then you first. You, or as an administrator, need to know if, say, you're superintendent by, probably May 15th, maybe earlier. So... If we don't know, um, that, um, the teacher's, you can be non-renewed by May the 15th, then there's been a breakdown in communication time. Or that teacher's done something. In the last month of school, it's been a great...
Speaking of local, like, we're having a...
Yes, uh, on the feedback that I think I might have sent to the board last week was Senator Dr. Daco made a statement that, um, no calendar legislation will be heard this year by rule cleave, which is the chair. And, um, maybe he gave for that because, you know, this part of the state, a lot of students are needed to have us on some campus. So, there would be no chances of a calendar...
So if he says some chance, then more important, yeah, you got to...
I'll see that later, Mr....
Not to paraphrase.
They ignore all those... And then there's 39, last count, there's 39 in calendar bills. That have been filed. And none will be... How did you, what, how did you speak the pressure on? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I had, John, even when, when I had, had the general assembly going, mostly because I was lost, because there was nothing else to do in the vote. It's mostly sound and figured, uh... Well, Senator Tillman and Representative Horn both spoke to the superintendent last Wednesday, and they were emphatic that they felt that it should be a local decision and that, um, most of their, their, uh, other legislatures felt the same way, that it should be a local decision. It's, it's a small minority in the House and Senate, they were...
For whatever reason, Liam said she was more hopeful in a long time that there actually could be progress.
I think it's, uh, I think it's two things. Number one, there's the 39 bill. And also some of the wording that, that is contained in some of the bills. For instance, one in particular, um, just asks that their school calendar, that they be allowed to align their school calendar with community colleges. And, um, so that's, that's argue that. The one thing that would help is the late March or early April snowfall, so... Yeah. Feels odd to say this. In the eastern part of the state.
Anything else from the chain on? So, uh...
No, sir, I'll bring you back to the, um...
Next meeting. Good. We will look at, and I think we'll be at that stage with those changes, we'll probably, as you said, move forward. Get a new place. Refresh my memory, but John, on ones that we polled, we still need to approve, is that correct? Next on the agenda is our contract with, uh, for our assistant principal at Frank High School. It was polled, and moved out, they couldn't have it for more, so... Mr. Tate?
That's Frank from Frank High School, he already owns that building.
Give me a second. All in favor, say my thing. Aye. You oppose. So moved. I'm sure Chris keeps pulling these good people out of hat, but I'm going to keep on doing it. That's good.
We've been very poor. Our luck's going to run out, I'm sorry.
I am, Jerry's one of those, glad we have a big, we do, currently, we have. Change to the, uh, 2014, uh, 15 school calendar. Again, this was a poll, we need formally approve it. As the board knows, we converted one, uh, March 27th to instructional day, and 12th to instructional day. And then we're leaving the 25th as an optional day. If, if missed more day, it could be more of a day. It's important to know, and hopefully maybe it does that, we would have to use that, thanks again, and praying and I reckon that they will be required, um...
Actually, um, as long as there's some information, she received a date from, of that sort of made organization about some activities that we can provide, and more...
Okay, Karen, would you come on up so that I could see that? Yeah, come on, man. I'm going to patch it.
Yes, you know, that books, um, where there's the, it's a conference, a ready conference. And hopefully it'll be doing, he's an active official, great service, Army, Navy, and Marines. I personally am the author, she's as sweet as she can be, but just to, like, for example, the letter A is the one. We start working with our children, the letter B is the basic conduct. You know, like, they're good, we hope the internet is, you know, so...
So we, we hope that we won't have any, any more technical weather. But if we do, um, that's going to put high, and then I have a boat, so it's actually under 1,000,000 hours of structure per hour. So, um, we have good options and no options. It could be spring break, Saturday, Memorial Day, that's really the only option we have. If we did have to make a trip on Memorial Day, we would definitely incorporate activities that we memorialize and...
So again, those, what was what we polled, so I hear most, and we accept the change to our school calendar. So moved. A motion to accept the change formally, and do I hear a second? A motion say, all in favor, say my thing. Aye. You oppose. So moved. Good. Lake County Schools' calendar, our 2015, 16, and we might as well just take both of them at the same time. Also with the, uh, early college calendar. Chris, I think there was, was a couple of changes that you had proposed or what you...
Well, I'll let Kim explain. He's got a few things that go along with the approval of his calendar.
The calendar we brought before you last month is back again this month for approval. Uh, but there's three things that we have to do, uh, during approval of that calendar. We have to designate the number of instructional hours...
We have to designate the number of instructional hours in our school days. Four, five, six, we got six instructional hours in this school. We need to make a plan, the Board needs to make a plan for make-up days, instructional hours, this for next year. When that's a good plan, who goes along with it. And we need to designate at least two teacher workdays that the teachers can take in. You can designate all of them, but you just don't.
So the doctrine we need to make, that needs all, those things need to be part of. Make sure, or they need to change, this is, it's the same element, probably, for that. That's a change.
And to, to two of those plans, first being the designated annual leave days, we don't have any mandatory workdays scheduled next year. All right, I thought that, we don't have any mandated. So as far as I'm concerned, designate all of those as optional annual leave days together. The other point would be to make up days. With calendar changes, there's been some confusion about built-in days and make-up time, and that's what, and the new, new calendar law is confusing. Prior to 2011, it was 185 days and 1,025 hours. And we're going to make more flexing and not change the beginning day of school. They changed the way to four, 185 days for 1,025 hours. Now, we can get 1,025 hours in, and 171 days of six hours of instruction each day. Obviously, we want to have the same amount of instruction, we want our students to have the same amount of instruction that every other student in the whole calendar has, which is most other calendars, we're on 180 days. So if we miss a snow day, we have to decide what we're going to make that day up. And, you know, prior to last winter, we missed three or four days of winter, and they would be scattered, unless it's Nantahale Highlands, then they miss more time. Generally, in the Franklin area, we miss an air two year, and air two there. But for the last two years, we missed these days in bulk, and they all went Saturday eight days. So my thinking, the past two school years has been that, well, if you miss three or four days, and they're as they normally is, we don't necessarily have to make those days up. But when you miss eight days consecutively, and the days that you go to school, and those two weeks are late arrivals, there's not much instruction that occurs in those ten days. Our students fall behind, other students can stay, and our teachers are at disadvantage, because they're going to be compared to the academic growth of other classes across the state. So we need to decide how we want to make those days up. And as I said, prior to these, these past two winters, my thought would be, well, if you miss two or three days, we'll be well over 1,025 hours in it, we don't have to worry about it. Obviously, that's not worked for the past two years, and that's what I get, was thinking I understood weather for care. So we've got some options with the 15-16 calendar. In my, in my opinion, we have some options. We have workdays on January 19th and 20th, a workday on February the 15th, a workday on March 28th, and a workday on April 22nd. Those right, those in this calendar are currently non-instructional days. Teachers are under contract to be at school on these days, unless if they can annual leave day, or we have a snow day. So my, can I say, because these are non-instructional days in this calendar. Now, for instance, if we have a snow day in the first week of January 4th through the 14th, my suggestion would be that we convert January the 20th to an instructional day, if we miss that week. This is not going to help the high schools a great deal, but it would provide the elementary's instructional day in the calendar of the new school. If we miss a day prior to February 15th, we'll make it up on February 15th. If we miss after February 15th, those days we make up from 28th to 22nd. You can see in June, we don't have any options after the 10th, because we'd have to make a special request to the Board to go on June the 13th. And I don't think that that's a very productive day in terms of, if we try to have construction on June the 13th. We can make up the hours, but we're not going to make up instruction. And that's what I'm, I'm concerned about, is not meeting the letter of the law on 1,025 hours, but rather, can we improve instruction? I think if we made up school on February the 15th, I think that we could, if it's like a regular school day. It's the same thing for March the 28th, the 22nd, April, those three days, we could actually make up some instructional time. Now, in regards to Nantahale Highlands, they may actually go over 1,025 hours, or, I should say, under 1,025 hours. But they were within one hour of doing that this year, and if we have any more incoming weather, they very well may go over that. So that would be my recommendation, that would be, miss school prior to January 20th, we'll make it up on January 20th. Prior to 15th, February 15th, we make it up on that day. And then anything after February the 15th, our first option would be March the 28th, and then finally, April the 22nd. And then I think that we'd be well within 1,025 hours of instruction, we'd meet the letter of the law, and rather than try to have school on Saturday for minimal instructional gain, or on Memorial Day, or over spring break, we would simply waive those days of instruction.
Well, I would be in agreement with the decision you're making, because I, you're talking about, you're missing instruction. That's fine, but I feel like on a Saturday, or on a spring break, you're still not going to get instruction in that school that day.
I agree, we would, we would meet the letter of the law in terms of instructional time, but you're not gaining any true instructional, productive instruction.
Do you have a conversation on Saturday's board, that you're supporting Saturday?
We're going to, and that's my opinion, and that's why I say that if we go over the four days, if we go over January 20th, February 15th, March 22nd, or the 28th, and April the 22nd, we'll simply waive those days, rather than try to have school on Saturday or the spring break.
And what are they going to do if Highlands falls under three hours, six hours? I mean, I guess, I guess it's a chance for them.
Well, actually, Senator Davis asked us, several super dicks, in his vision, last week, to hang on to a bill that's been filed, and that bill would say that if you miss, if you cannot meet the 1,025 hours, you would only have to make up the maximum amount of time that you made up in the previous four or five years. So in other words, if you go under 1,025 hours, rather than have to make up school on Saturday, or spring break, or Memorial Day, you just have to make, make up the maximum amount that you made up. So in other words, if Highlands is made up three days this year, you'd only have to make up three days next year, no matter how many days. So we do have that possible legislation.
As it stands, the Department of State, it says the World War May revise the schedule of closing day, if necessary, comply with the minimum requirements for instructional days or instructional time. So that's, that's a possibility, yes.
So we could, Dan, we could go to the general, at least, Dan.
That's an issue.
Yes. Who does the people that would make plans, so we try to, so, become an issue, so I think what's, Chris is, we'll go with what Chris is suggesting.
The other issue, the other issue that's standing in school year is that our testing calendar is already fairly set. And even if it's not set, and you start, if you add a Monday and Tuesday at the following week, you're not going to test on that Monday and Tuesday, you're going to keep that test in the, in the block of that week.
Then you are losing total instruction.
You are.
You were just coming here to school to keep rolling, and coming out. That's all we're figuring here for.
If we, if we had, as we did this year, I think actually had the day at the end of the year, actually helped school.
Right, that's one day, and that moved the testing a little bit, so.
If you went next year, we'd be adding Monday, and it's like, we would know, rather than that.
So I would be very full of that, see, and?
So in our adoption of the calendar, we need to add that also, the calendar is built on six instructional hours per day, and that we will also, within that adoption of the calendar, designate all workdays as optional leave day. Anything else we need to make on those adoption of the calendar?
Not those, but you do have to, make sure you have the plan in place.
We're going to do that separately, yeah, I'm going to do that as a separate action. We're going to do, or it doesn't need to be in this.
It's in the calendar, I don't know.
Let's just go and do that, so we're going to adopt the calendar with the Baldwin provisions, Board member. That it's understood that our, our days have six instructional hours, and also with adoption of our new calendar, that it's designated all of our days as optional leave days, and that we are designated with the adoption of the calendar, that our make-up days will be designated as January 20th, February 15th, March the 28th, and April the 22nd.
Could we use all of those days, those workdays, for make-up days for, for snow? Are the teachers still allowed those annual leave days?
Yes, and I would add one thing to this, the March of 28th, that is the end of the third grade, is that correct?
I guess, uh, March 28th.
Or end of the third grade year, sorry, 28th.
Does, I mean, if that's our Monday, too.
Or is it April the 27th?
End of the nine-week stay, isn't it?
So that, that, that workday that's in April there is not for averaging grade, that's just basically we give two to the grade, I think.
Two to the grade, so.
Yes.
We'll leave it as we have it. Any other discussion on the adoption of the school calendar? I learned from the motion that we adopted kind of presented with the changes as, what I think was by him, and had those as provisions to the, to the calendar. Very much. On the motion that we approved with the provisions added, and we also have a second. Any other discussion? If not all in favor, say a aye. You oppose, so I'm moved, good. Thank you, Tim, for y'all's support. No, it's all, you know, just keep it, I just put them all in the same, because no, it starts a little earlier. Buildings and grounds, QZAB resolutions, as y'all know, we polled, and I think the resolutions have signed, and we have already sent those in, but we still need to take the formal approval from the Board, that we understand that we did that, and that was what decided. Yes, we'll get over it, I think it's a very good idea. We appreciate the Commissioners stepping in, and understanding their needs, and bringing them forward with this, so, and so, it's exciting. Both these schools, both high school.
Mr. Bell, I was supposed to open with Mr. Johnny Clark of PPI, who received these applications, and he's, he's got a shirt that will be, um, right.
All right, so let's go ahead and make it a formal, so if I, do I hear a motion, we approve the QZAB resolutions as they've been presented formally?
I make a formal, uh, I make a motion to approve the QZAB resolutions as presented.
And do I hear a second? Motion we accept in a second, all in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
You oppose, so I'm moved. It's in the, that you can say, Mr. Chris, correct. Carberry House discussion, Mr. Bell?
So the Carberry House is about to conclude as far as what needs to be done, in the way for it to sell. Can't tell if we have anything to add to that. They're building a deck, deck on the sun, and they have two closets, the top floor and down, and they have a light and heat, so we're ready to go.
And just refresh my memory, and answer, okay, we're going to put that out, it's going to be in bidding process, is that correct? It's kind of like we do on, on anything where it was properly said.
Well, there's actually a statute on product, work product activities like this, work activities. Products that are made through a work activity, CTE, Piper, there's a separate statute that says, if the Board adopts rules by which that property is disposed, you don't have to go through all the, go through all the hoops of, you know, other property disposal, and you can do it by a given process. So I probably need to have, even if it's just a fairly informed, ring, the Board can, can look at, and affirm as, here's a method, and use, and any of them, in fact, you know, it's going to be. Unless they're, are they going to have to run it to sell, or is it faster than that?
I think it'd be ready, so I'll go first and look, what do you think?
Yeah, and, and we're kind of looking to get this going, because we've got some insurance issues, where they don't want to insure an empty house, so the rates would increase drastically, I'm assuming.
Any workers left to visit Carberry House?
So it will be finished prior to our next meeting.
I think so.
I guess we'll have to do, we don't necessarily like to do it this way, but I think it's one where, if we can save money, then we'll simply pull the Board members. John, if we do that, can you go ahead and get something, so we can, when we do that, we'll have to, we can prove the process while we're doing it?
Yes, sir, my suggestion would be that you could now, if you're getting a motion, that instructs me to draft rules by which this property is disposed of, may all help with this.
I have a question, that we instruct students to, uh, provide some, uh, of the, of the, prior to having to ensure the process.
And I, I'll, I'll go also, just give it a little more than, than a pretty thing, I mean, a lot of them. I can also tell you what I've, what I've done with other vendors, is a 30-day bid process, so, and I think, the normal bidding process, you get a 30-day bid, but that will hopefully, hopefully, I don't know how it works out on the calendar, maybe just one, I can have it approved.
Well, I don't know, it's a good one, but, and we'll set up, yes, and then, and then we have open period for 30 days. And if that's our day, we open the bid, and we get a word of the bid nearby, and it's, it saves a little bit, I guess.
Let's take it all this time in one, John, for being, so, basically, what Stephanie's done is we've, she's made a motion that you will authorize you to draft a resolution, but a process by which we will enter into the sale of the home, and we need anything else to add, and that, such as, as soon as that's presented, the Board members, the Board members will then, will be, it will be given to Board members for a formal vote.
Well, if you wanted it in the motion, and formally approve it now, the things that I would add are that it be a 30-day bid process, with a stated minimum price to be determined by two for ten hours. And for, for approval by.
So I would add to my motion that we do a 30-day bid with a minimum bid, and come back to school, and it would be accepted above the, above the.
Well, I think the down payment is perfect.
I would also like to add to my motion, sort of, the down payment of property, would be required to make the bid.
I think we're there, Renate, do you have any questions about how we got there?
I have a motion, all in favor.
Do I hear a second?
Aye.
A motion saying all in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
You oppose, so I'm moved, thanks.
I got a question.
World Changers Facility Usage Agreement, Mr. Bell?
Well, I would go with the agreement, World Changers, it looks to be the same routine, contracts, you have your in, your out, the world changes, and make your own.
I'll make a motion to accept, both bringing it as.
And what's agreed, do I hear a second? A motion saying all in favor, say a aye. You oppose? So it's all, we'll be, approved, thank you. Holland's Concession Stand Door Replaced.
date that you're familiar with, except I think this is motorized, and it was inoperable, and it had, couldn't have had it re-replaced, and had your place open, or wouldn't use that concession stand. It costs seventeen hundred dollars, and I guess the question is, one is more pleasure, and I would take the seventeen hundred dollars.
That's very good. Yeah, we know that we got the car, that you're coming here very shortly, so I'd just say for your convenience, I would recommend we use cartoon J money, that can, I can, pay for this, it's very small, and I pay for it when I want.
I make a motion to.
A motion to say we pay the money for the repair out of cartoon J funds, any other discussion? Here, now, all in favor, say what I'm saying, aye. You oppose, so moved. Thank you for taking care of that quickly, Mr. Bell. Budget amendments, Angie, state and federal, just go ahead and run both of those, please. Slow down a little bit. Whoa, good. Yeah, John, if you wouldn't give us nothing, we're adding on our color state to school bill. This is, this is where the media also, if y'all knew where we were or not, so.
Current debt amount is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. The new offset bill period served this past Friday, it runs from Monday, March thirtieth to today. The new minimum offset bid amount is a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, and the minimum deposit is seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars.
We have our full permission to promote that this debt, that period will be open until when, this reading?
March thirtieth.
March thirtieth. If anybody's interested, put them on the bills.
What's the amount of offset bid?
Hundred and forty-six.
Hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five.
Duplication, easy access. Multiple, multiple use options, all those things. Thank you, John.
This is our new bidder? No, this is one of, two or three there.
Just wanna say we put it up there, and with the meter front that says it's open, may introduce a new one.
And there may be a couple, there were a couple that haven't made bids yet, Mike.
There we go. How long can we use that? That's another way ahead. Now, we'll move on to budget amendments, once I get, right, Angie.
The first one is state, and we have the negative of seventy-three, ten, three, nine dollars, but we remember last month, I thought you got money for volcanic alarms, that's seventy dollars, six hundred and thirty dollars, and that we need to, on PPI's part, so that we can take that away, we say this, the reduction of that minimum. The bulk, or, the rest of them are just moving to one part of it, based on labels that we've done, and completed, how, any of the others? And my other question, I don't know. Next one is stable, and that cost over eighty, eighty-three, and that's just, sure, that's the legal adjustments on the federal side, so giving us money a year, and making a lot of it, and adjusting the price from the ratio, so we're paying a lot, and we're back to a lot.
No, I entered a motion to approve the amendments as presented.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I ask for the gentleman.
Go ahead, second, have a second. All in favor, say what I'm saying, aye. You oppose, so moved. Budget summary, Angie.
Okay, you have a handout inter packets of where we're at right now, as of mid-March, and it should be at about seventy-one percent, and if we go down through there and look at the, I think it's highlighted in blue, fund one, which is for state fund, it's seventy-four forty-two, so we're on target with that. Next one is fund two, which is local permanent spend, sixty-seven percent, that's pretty good. Fund three is sixty-four four fifty-six, which is also pretty good. Fund four, you're gonna see that it says ninety, but don't let that excite you, but um, that's, that's where all of the state gave, just based on what the county provides for, as those, those, those businesses are now, at the end of the year, so, that's what I would, will, will, I bet, it's all in this.
So you still, you're fairly on topic?
Yes.
Makes it feel fresh, it feels, it feels like we had hoped, that we should do something possible.
And if you skate, if you might have any questions, if you scan down through there and see.
Any questions of Angie? Like I said, these are just for informational purposes, also. Now we get to the fun stuff. Two thousand fifteen, sixteen draft budget discussion, Angie. Again, I don't think we're ready to adopt a budget, but Angie's gonna give us some more good news.
We're not ready, but we do have to have something submitted to the county commissioner by April the fifteenth, and at this point, we don't know anything. We should get some planning allowance sometime in April, and we don't know when, and all we know right now is what we're hearing, and we don't really know those things for sure, but we are hearing that there's going to be two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, a present, teacher assistance, actually, the present's twenty-five percent, and for us, it's about two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The beginning teachers will be bumped up from thirty-three thousand to thirty-five thousand, so that raise, plus the increase in benefits that they're telling us to plan on, will cost about eighty-five thousand dollars on the local end for us. We have other locally paid personnel, and at this time, we might hear any salary increase for those, but we just have to figure in the benefits for hospitalization and retirement that we're just paying. So that's about twenty-three thousand, a little over twenty-three thousand dollars.
If we get, if we get the same rate that we got last year, it's about thirty-two.
Right.
On top of the increase run.
And we know that they're discussing driver's education, so if they don't fund that, again, this coming two-year, our allotment this year was about twenty, seventy, our allotment this year was seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. That alone was seven four hundred dollars, less than the prior one. So even if we do get funded in driver's ed, I expect for it to go down at least, probably seven or eight thousand dollars, for sure, if we get funded. We currently do charge twenty dollars if it's a student, and I'm not, I'm not gonna discuss that, I think that's if they don't pass the first time, but uh.
I believe that, but. We don't charge them automatic, although it's only after they've got all that test. Put it automatic, put it all in. So every student is charged twenty dollars.
But I think it's a great idea.
But we do give them first test, where if they, if they take, have to take the test again, then they have to also take the test on the public.
So that would be an increase to local, we have to take some typically out of local anyway, usually around twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars out of local, but if we lose that seventy, roughly seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars, it's saved a lot, so we'll have to pick that up, we still, we still have to offer that.
And, Mr. Bell, what's that, everything?
He's driving a good car. We lost transmission, again, again, in the driver's ed car, and then we got the old brown, the crown, in the driver's ed car.
Which has two.
Yeah, it's just a little.
It's over to another man.
I'll make drivers have a CTE class where you have to learn how to fix the car.
We got that part. Kind of go to the real world.
Seriously. I'm not sure. Carol, we have to get that off back there and that.
Angie, if you would, give us, well, just talk about, you know, give us a total of the cuts that we're hearing in the total.
If everything happens that I just mentioned, and I, I think we get to the timber sales, we have a lot of timber sale money, and we receive our check Friday for that for this year, we have a budget of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this year, and we're going to do that, and our check is actually fifty-six thousand, and that's not even a thousand dollars, that's actually a bachelor for this year. So if you calculate all that up for next year, it's around six hundred thousand dollars that could, maybe, if we don't have to look.
And, that, that's what we, we understand from, the budget from two thousand fifteen to sixteen, or the fourteen fifteen budget, for instance, the fourteen fifteen budget had third grade teachers that had to pay for with non-recurring money. So that means that the budget does not include that funding for next year. However, the governor's proposed budget would extend that non-recurring money again in fifteen sixteen, so I'm encouraged by the governor's budget with regard to teacher assistance. There is also some legislation that was filed this week in regards to driver's ed funding. There seems to be some confidence in, in Ralick, that funding for driver's ed will occur again next year. So, we have a lot of these question marks hanging over our head, and we can't really budget it till we know what's gonna happen, but, that's kinda where we are. I'll, I'll speak to the timber seller, I think that county commissioners met, watched him, Representative Meadows up there, he seemed to think that we may be able to get some of that timber sales money back next year. There's a lot up in the air, what, what we have to hope for, just to see how it pans out.
In the meantime, we will need to probably have a meeting so we can formally, as inaccurate as it may be, we still need to be able to submit and direct the, the, the budget to our commissioners by fifteenth. I think we, we'll get off of it, maybe we'll get some of the sanctions and stuff, so what is, if we have to have a budget work session, what's best for everyone? In the morning, does that work out better?
Morning's a better for me.
Do you like your question? You can, how about Senator Davis? I can follow you, you know, progress on.
I've not heard anything else about that, because I've, I've been watching the legislative updates for any bill in reference to our situation, but I've not seen.
Drafted, but not.
To my knowledge, it hasn't been filed.
That's what I saw, when I talked to. Have you got a calendar there? I mean, part of the fifteen. Is a Thursday better? What's the best day during the week for the budget, is there?
It's four, it's next week.
Well, it is the fourteenth.
It isn't, it's probably got some made up locations, during that week. I'm looking at like, prior to, we met on that Thursday, the ninth, and that way we get, anytime you think dawn, and then the W, and then by the fall of the Wednesday. Does that, do you want to have any conflicts, just anybody that knows it, ninth?
And, and Angie's point is that we don't have something in the state in terms of a planning law, really, though, I think, I don't know what we're predicting, I don't know what we're discussing tonight, either.
I think formally, we'd be, be a formal meeting, we just pretty much have to take what Angie just told us, and put that into a budget, and, and go with it. Do you, do you have a way to do it?
We've been told, we've got to do this all the way, because we're gonna take the mission.
I know, but if she, if we're gonna have needs, and then you come back to me, we'll have a connection, and first, because her better off, you're like, yeah, just, just somewhere worse.
I understand. Finish point is there's appeal introductions, driver's ed. Yeah, from last week, appeal was introduced, so it's in, so. Let's do this, let Stephanie, I'm gonna throw it to the, either eighth or the ninth, everybody please check your calendars, and let, if there's a conflict on either of those two days, let Renee. So everybody check their calendar for the night, we have a party group over here, and if you have a conflict on that date, let Renee know, hopefully by tomorrow.
That would be in the morning.
That would be in the morning, like nine o'clock. If not, we're totally gonna set our hearing, a budget, during, like, we said on the ninth. Tommy, we're gonna be here. Okay, but, but that work in the morning, so Tim Lee will set for ninth at nine o'clock.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Phil.
I think you're on the right track, with the deficits that she just got to talk about, for the county commissioners to have a visual of what can last year, not going to end this year, possibility, that's six hundred thousand.
Yeah, we'll add that, we'll, we'll have that in bold, and highlights, boy, I promise.
I can also have a play violin.
Yeah, we didn't want to do, probably have a little separate thing when we send it to you, listing those three things, for y'all's consideration.
I think this real thing, this, this thing, should take a break, I mean, no calls at your home.
There you go.
I think you should have a presentation.
There it is. You know, Chris, becoming. Do you know, is there a kind of a?
I think that's the fifteenth.
Is the fifteenth, is that the day you're having, where you have all the departments coming in, Gary, is that what it is?
I think, I think that's your day.
Okay, good, yeah, Chris, go ahead, and then support, yes, good, okay. Surplus property resolution, Angie.
That is, we have some old welders that came out of the local apartment, in front of high school, and some of these things, and then that site, most of it sits behind the DM there at high school, and that is surplus asset.
Yeah, it, it, the notice that is, it's up there so weak, that the traffic, and, and so, so, like, yeah. Welding, it's not all.
Yeah, we have a resolution that says listed be the plant surplus, so we can move forward with the disposal, do your motion, we approve the resolution. Do you have a second, Missy?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say what I'm saying, aye. So moved. Approval E-rate fundee.
Okay, everybody knows what E-rate is, right? E-rate.
Every month on your phone bill, there's a, there's a tax on your phone bill, it's an E-rate excess tax. That money that gets taken out of your phone bill goes toward schools and libraries to fund phone service, internet service, and internal connections services. The focus is starting to move from E-rate from old telephone service and things of that nature, to internal connections and wireless connectivity. They make quite a bit of money available for these next two years for schools or libraries to apply for internal connections, or category two is what they call it, which is actually equipment and wiring. The state of North Carolina applied for E-rate for about seventy-three school districts that they qualify for, for category two, under E-rate. What that means to us is about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars for upgrading our internet wireless, and rewiring the wireless network, combining access points.
How much is that?
Six hundred and sixty thousand dollars is probably what you get.
And then this basically, just to, this is just in purpose speed, and I'm actually, like, better connectivity.
Higher density wireless network. We have a lot of one-to-ones, and this business right now, and the, the access points are really not, not capable of handling.
But we can't purchase the laces.
We cannot purchase the laces, we can only purchase wireless access points, switch a network here to run those access points, and wiring to get to those access points from network nodes. That's what this money is for. That would mean about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars for us, E-rate funds us at about eighty percent, so the federal government would be paying for eighty percent of that, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The leftover race to the top money that the state has will fund the other portion of that, the other twenty percent of that, so it won't cost the district anything. But I do need your approval to be on the contract for the chosen vendors, whoever that may be, but the state did the bid process, and we haven't gotten all the information back from them yet, but in the next two days, we'll have that information, and be able to choose a vendor to complete the work. Again, it won't cost.
the work. Again, it won't cost the school district anything. We will get the race to the top money from the state, that twenty percent sometime in the next month or so. That money has to be expended by August fifteenth, so most of the project has to be completed by August fifteenth. It's a real short time for us to get every wireless access point, every flash, and every wired in the district. But they say they can do it.
I think at one point, we can't use that six hundred thousand dollars to protect your system salaries or keep your salaries, or things like that, or iPads, or things like that.
Can't buy any other technology really, except for wireless access points, wiring to the access points from the network closet, and switches to control wireless access points.
That's the question, how we replace the lights at the middle, and then we do that, but we, we got that front of the lights.
That was, that was due, a special appropriation by the professional like here in the last session. We went to seventeen western counties, which we got thirty-three thousand, sixty hundred dollars, and it's all to be careful.
I understand. I would, I would spend, spend twenty-seven hundred thousand dollars on access points.
I'd like to have a three-hundred thousand dollar cash interest.
Oh, we definitely have a question on that. And I'm glad to know that definitely I already have a bundle.
We've been getting internet access that's been covering about eight, eight percent of the cost of our phone systems and internet access and student email and things of that nature. Next year, it will not cover student email and phone service. We'll reduce twenty percent over the next three or four years until it's no longer funded.
So let's be clear about what that means. You, you go about basically cutting out budget.
Well, yeah, and this is a federal money cut. They'll reduce the amount, we were getting about forty, forty-nine thousand dollars to cover phone services. That amount will be reduced twenty percent for this coming year, twenty more percent for next year until it works out.
So basically, we'll, we'll actually, it's not cut, our budget is, what's the other impact?
We, we have to budget or not. We budget. Yeah, we budget anyway for phone services. That money just comes back in as revenue after we get reimbursed for paying for the rate. And we'll, we'll stop giving that revenue back on that back. But this is a chance to get six hundred and sixty thousand dollars for wireless schools, high density wireless networks in our schools, high speed and wireless networks. No cost to the school system, but I do need your approval to enter into a contract with the vendor.
Basically, you get a motion that?
Yeah, contingent upon race to top funding goes through. You get funded race to top and continuing upon E-rate.
Now, somebody else has a motion that we approve. You've authored it into the contract.
Correct.
And motion, go here, second. A motion to say all in favor, say if I'm saying aye. You oppose. So moved.
Thank you for your ongoing work, and I know a lot of your work. I have a question. Do, do all that work that they have to have done by August?
They have chosen one vendor for wireless equipment. They've chosen another vendor for the wiring, the installing, the wiring, and another vendor for configuration. We'll probably save a little money there. We have, the line is here, we can configure them ourselves, but we'll, we'll at least do the wiring and we'll do the access points and network switches.
They is the state. They state, the state of the country has a process, they go through the bid, and they.
Yeah, they've already built the whole project out, but they're sending it through this. We're not required to do the same kind of bidding again. We can bid, always back in on the same conference. Because the race to the top money has to be expended that the state has by August fifteenth. The E-rate money can be spent up through December, but because part of that project is funded through E-rate, it has to be.
One other thing, it looks like we have, I don't know we have in our packet, some dates coming in advance. Dr. Baum, would you go over those quickly, please?
Tomorrow, that press with me, spring break, we have a six to the tenth. Kindergarten orientation dates, and they're in your packet, they're up there too late, but seeing all that through the kindergarten orientation. Give us, do you have a copy of this video? And then our next working day, Miss Evans.
We might need to change that date, Fred. Get with me in a minute or so. We'll talk about that with David twenty-seven, so we may, hope the board is possible, where we can just still meet. The date, we'll have to, we'll have to, kind of revise the paper and things. To me, it looks like it. Anything, anything else? Want to form a, just want to come put the board this time? Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. A motion to adjourn, all in favor, say if I'm saying aye. So moved. Very good.